As soon as Bob lets me, I'll call the meeting. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. At the end of the meeting, we expect to have a brief executive session. We do not expect to reconvene the public meeting after the executive session. I would like to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in each of the five boroughs at which members of the public may speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to turn off your cell phones or Blackberries? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this Board meeting live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank Trustee Charles Shorter for representing CUNY at the Association of Governing Boards 2012 Conference on Trusteeship in National Harbor, Maryland from April 22nd to April 24th. Trustee Shorter, thank you for all you're doing for the AGB Board. Do you have anything relevant to report to the Board that came out of the AGB conference?
Very briefly, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who don't know, the Association of Governing Boards of colleges and universities has approximately 1,800 members. And the conference last week included approximately 1,100 trustees and presidents from colleges and universities across the country. AGB is focused on the major issues and more importantly on solutions, innovative solutions, to the problems facing higher education, including especially finance and enrollment problems. And there's a great deal of focus on the public universities. We had at last week's session, for example, Professor Clayton Christensen from the Harvard Business School, who was the author of Innovative Universities, and he gave a particularly stunning lecture on the modular university versus the interdependent university and the issues confronting institutions such as CUNY but public colleges and universities across the country. To summarize, one of the things that I hope all of you and we know as members of AGB, they have tremendous resources available to us: consulting resources, educational resources, board resources, and I hope you will avail yourself of them. It's a pretty fantastic and dedicated institution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Shorter. May I also thank Trustee Kathleen Pacilli for representing CUNY for the 12th year at its Big Apple Jobs Fair on April 27th, held at the Javits Conference Center. This is a great program that brings CUNY students into contact with prospective employers. And congratulations to Chancellor Goldstein on his appointment by Governor Cuomo today to the New York Education Reform Commission. We look forward to your work on that commission. I'd like to report that the Board held its Staten Island Borough hearing on March 19th, 2012. Trustee Kathleen Pacilli chaired the hearing. That was also attended by trustees Rita DiMartino, Kefue Kuaku, and Sandy Cooper, members of the Chancellery and College of Staten Island President Tomas Morales. The Board held its Queensborough hearing on April 23rd, 2012. Trustee Valerie Beal chaired this hearing, which was also attended by trustees Judah Grivitz, Kefue Kuaku, and Sandy Cooper, members of the Chancellery, and the Queens College presidents and law school dean or their representatives. A summary of these proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and the Chancellor's cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the Secretary. Our next borough hearing will be held in the Bronx on June 18th, 2012, at Ostos Community College. I have great news from the CUNY Athletic Conference. We have four Scholar Athletes with a GPA of 3.6 or above. They are three times All-American Swimming and Tennis Champion, Cross Country and Track Champion Vladislav Romanov of the College of Staten Island, Mallory Grubler of Hunter's College Women's Volleyball Team, Tenny Embadu of Queensborough Community College Men's Soccer, and two times All-American Cross Country and Track Champion Xenia George of Kingsborough Community College. Let's give a hand to those. May I now call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to four CUNY faculty members who were awarded Guggenheim Fellowships for their outstanding achievements. They are Bronx Community College Art and Music Professor Tom Chipulow and History Professor Dagmar Herzog, English Comparative Literature and American Studies Professor Joan Richardson and Journalism Adjunct Member Yoruba Richmond, all from the CUNY Graduate Center. Congratulations to Brooklyn College, City College, Hunter College, and Queens College for being included in the 2012 Princeton Review Guide to 322 Green Colleges and to Queens College Professor Susan Kroll and Hunter College Professor Ava Livson for being included in the Princeton Review's The Best 300 Professors. Congratulations to Baruch College for being ranked among 2013 Best Graduate Schools by the U.S. News and World Report. Congratulations to Queens College Education and Community Programs Professor Natholus Wamba for receiving a Fulbright Teaching and Research Fellowship. Congratulations to Brooklyn College Music Professor Tanya Leon who received a Sphinx Medal of Excellence at an award ceremony co-hosted by Justice Sotomayara and held at the U.S. Supreme Court. Congratulations to Hunter College Distinguished Professor of English Peter Carey who received the Bob Lee Medal Award from the University of Oxford's Libraries, and to Hunter Anthology Professor Emeritus John Oakes who receives a Lifetime Achievement Award from the International Primatology Society. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Professor Sandy Cooper would like to make an announcement.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the Felix Gross Award, handed out by the CUNY Academy of Humanities and Sciences, an organization affiliated with the University Faculty Senate and chartered by the trustees in 1980, has selected four faculty for its annual Felix Gross Award. They are Esther Allen of the Department of Modern Languages and Comparative Literature of Baruch College, Monde Holford of Chemistry at Hunter College, Meeen Aysen Doiran of Economics and Business at Lehman College, and Zachary Sherkey of Political Science at Hunter College. The selection committee consisted of a group of four of five retired community college professors who selected these faculty from the senior colleges. The contest is open to faculty across the system. I've forgotten how many submissions there were; it was somewhere in the nature of 40 or 50. The academy also handed out over 100 William Stewart Travel Awards to Assistant Professors this year to help with research trips. Thank you.
Thank you. May I now call on Trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to four CUNY faculty members who were awarded Guggenheim Fellowships for their outstanding achievements. They are Bronx Community College Art and Music Professor Tom Chipulio and History Professor Dagmar Herzog, English Comparative Literature and American Studies Professor Joan Richardson, and Journalism Adjunct Member Yoruba Rishen, all from the CUNY Graduate Congratulations to the 16 students from across CUNY who have won National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowships. This is the highest number in CUNY history. No public university in the Northeast has more winners than CUNY. The students are Baruch College alumna Belen Carolina Guerrero Corillo, City College alumni Deborah Yemi Ayani, Teresa Lynn Karanaza Fulmer, Charlie Corridor, Zivi Herschel—that's Zivi Herschel Fishman, Jamila Kaplan Kester, Kristi Ann Scohado, Macaulay Honors College at City College alumni Donald Wei and Stephen Ma and senior Jay Sung Hung, Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College seniors Vivian Francesca Balsodere and Vincent Shu, Hunter College senior Jamea Santilian and alumna Carolina Salguero, Graduate Center doctoral student Andrew Goldclank Fulmer, and York College alumnus Kirk Donald Haltofter Hyde. Congratulations to the four students who have been awarded Jeanette K. Watson Fellowships. They are Andrea Monte Tokoga and Kwame Okron of Hunter College, and Kamalia Kwan and Michael Stivers of Baruch College. Congratulations also to Queens College senior Erika Leong who received a Fulbright Teaching Fellowship. Congratulations in order to the team of City College Public Policy Students, whose paper was picked as Best Policy of the Year in a nationwide competition sponsored by the Roosevelt Institute. Congratulations to 14 Medgar Ever's College Biology and Environmental Science students who presented posters at the Eastern College Science Conference at William Patterson University. Congratulations to Kingsborough Community College alumnus LeVar Thomas, now a junior at Clark University, who was selected to participate in the 2012 Ralph Bunch Summer Institute at Duke University. Congratulations to Baruch College Masters in Financial Engineering students who took first and fourth place in the annual Rothman International Trading Competition. And finally, congratulations to Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College senior David Weinberg, who has been chosen as the 2012-2013 New York City Urban Fellow. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the February 27th, 2012, meeting. It's at the table and in your trustees' calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with the state budget, which I've reported on before, but I have a few extra items that I'd like to embed into my prior comments about this budget. At the end of March, Governor Cuomo and the leaders of the New York State Legislature reached an agreement on the fiscal 2013 operating and capital budgets. I would only remind you that when this Board approved the five-year tuition plan, when the law on the tuition plan was amended to require that both CUNY and SUNY maintain the revenue that they collect from tuition, and probably the most important component of the plan, the maintenance of effort, those three items will give us stability over the next several years outside of the remote possibility of an unforeseen force sigma event. So I think we are in pretty good shape going forward, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, and with our philanthropy increasing at really spectacular rates and other entrepreneurial activities operating at the university, there is serious revenue that is now coming into the university that will help us immeasurably over the next few years. Specifically, on the operating side for the senior colleges, the adopted budget maintains the Executive's recommendation of slightly under $71 million in additional state aid and the recognition of a little over $66 million in increased tuition revenue. The adopted budget also includes $1 million for the CUNY Leeds Program, which provides academic and career counseling as well as internship and job placement assistance to our students with disabilities. For the community colleges, the adopted budget increases the base aid by $150 per FTE student up to $2722. This will generate an additional $12.2 million in state aid for our community colleges in the next fiscal year. In addition, the FY12 legislative increase of a little over a half a million dollars for childcare that was not included has now been restored. I reported that we were successful in getting monies for adjunct health insurance, which was a real priority for us, and we are looking into the possibilities now of how we can extend those kinds of benefits a little further, and we will be considering those ideas over the next several weeks. With the multi-year opportunities presented to us, especially at the community colleges, I've directed our Chancellery to work with our presidents and faculties across the university to come up with very bold plans to really inject revenues of significance into our community colleges that will enable them to do the kinds of things that we aspire to do but have never had the revenue in the past to accomplish those goals. With respect to our capital needs, the state adopted budget maintains the Executive recommendation of about $284 million in appropriations for critical maintenance projects at the senior colleges and a little under $27 million in appropriations for community college projects that have received city funding. The budget also includes $37 million for capital program-related operating expenses incurred by the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York and the City University Construction Fund. I'm pleased also to say that after relentless discussions, we appear to be successful in getting a dry appropriation to start our New York City College of Technology academic building that has been in design now for several years, but we've never been able to start the project because we have not had it fully funded. But we worked with the Division of the Budget, and we will get that going, and delighted that we could see that happening. Obviously, we're continuing to pursue capital budget enhancements over the rest of the year. The adopted budget also includes legislation directing both CUNY and SUNY to conduct a study on student remediation, which will include various factors, including strategies and programs recognized to be effective in addressing the needs of remedial students and promoting successful transition to college readiness, efforts to support a student's transfer from colleges that offer associate degrees to colleges that offer baccalaureate degrees, and methods for improving post-secondary completion rates. In addition, the legislation directs the Boards of both CUNY and SUNY to examine the laws, regulations, and policies regarding community college charges for non-resident students. I've had several conversations with Chancellor Zimfer of the SUNY system to coordinate our responses on both these activities. The mayor will release his executive budget on Thursday, May 3rd, this week. We are working with both the mayor's office and the city council on our priorities. I would like to thank Presidents Carol Burrow Joseph, Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza, Senior University Dean John Mogalescu, and Director Richard Alvarez for testifying before the New York City Higher Education Committee last week on CUNY preparations to meet student enrollment needs for the coming academic year. I'm pleased to announce, and you've seen this widely in the press, that CUNY is one of the universities partnering with New York University on the Applied Science Initiative announced by the mayor last week in Brooklyn. The Center for Urban Science and Progress is a public-private research center that will use New York City as its lab and classroom to create products and services that will enable cities around the world to meet more productive, livable, and resilient. The consortium of academic and industry partners includes not only NYU and NYU Poly, but Carnegie Mellon University, the Indian Institute of Technology in Bombay, the University of Toronto, and the University of Warwick. We also have industry partners, including IBM, Cisco, Siemens, Con Edison, National Grid, Xerox, Arop, IDEO, and AECOM. CUSP, which is the acronym, will focus on research and development of technology to address the critical challenges facing cities, including infrastructure, technology integration, energy efficiency, transportation congestion, public safety, and public health. I would like to publicly thank Vice Chancellor Gillian Small, who really led the effort in representing CUNY in this important effort, so thank you, Gillian, for your very able work. With respect to the CUNY Master Plan, the 2012 through 2016 Master Plan, which is my intention to bring to the Board for its review and hopeful approval, we are in the process of collecting many pieces of suggestions and recommendations throughout the CUNY Committee, and I want to thank many of the trustees who have commented on the plan. As I indicated, this will be reviewed by an outside entity to give a perspective on how other major universities would look at what we are planning to do. In recent years, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, the university reaffirmed its commitment to transformative change to ensure that diversity and inclusion remain central to our core academic values. Several years ago, to provide greater focus on recruiting and retaining a diverse full-time faculty and staff, we established the Office of University Dean for Recruitment and Diversity. In addition, the innovative programs established as part of the Chancellor's diversity initiatives attest to our continuing efforts to enhance faculty diversity. To continue building on our successes, last year I appointed a diversity study steering committee and asked Cambridge Hill Partners, a consulting firm with extensive experience in the areas of diversity and strategic planning in higher education, to work with Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters and Dean Jennifer Rubain to assess CUNY's recruitment and retention challenges and opportunities. Their efforts resulted in the completion of a study that identified best practices to recruit and retain faculty and promote inclusion. This Diversity Action Plan was prepared by the Ad Hoc Committee on Strengthening Faculty Diversity, a committee composed of trustees, members of the Chancellery, presidents, and faculty, and student representatives. In her report to the Board tonight, trustee Valerie Beal will share with you some of the pertinent points of the plan, which is entitled "Building on a Strong Foundation: A Strategy for Enhancing CUNY's Leadership in the Areas of Faculty Diversity and Inclusion." Now and in the years to come, CUNY has a critical role to play in advancing diversity and inclusion on national and even international levels. The Diversity Action Plan outlines a comprehensive approach to strengthening the university's leadership role. I am confident that we will be showing unwavering support of the campuses as we move to successfully implement some of these important recommendations. I would like to alert the Board that the Community Counseling Services organization chaired by David Jones is about to release a report that I took some strenuous exceptions to. I met with Mr. Jones, we met with his staff, and that report is presently being circulated. We have prided ourselves at this university in acting as an integrated university. The number of undergraduates that are of African-American descent has increased by 6.6% over the last decade, and the percentage of undergraduates that are of Hispanic descent has increased almost 41% at this university. I would say these numbers are extraordinarily impressive. I would say these numbers are extraordinarily impressive, and not only are the numbers increasing in dramatically fast ways, but we're graduating many more students that are of Hispanic and Black heritage. The report that the Community Counseling, the Community Services Society is about to produce has only looked at the years 2009 through 2010, which was a recession, a deep recession, in the city and in the United States. I think it is famously flawed. I think the idea that we are able to start students at our community colleges who are not able to get into our senior colleges and then successfully get their baccalaureate's degree is a badge of honor for us. So, I just wanted to alert the board that that report is going to be coming out, and if any of you have questions with respect to the data, please contact me or one of the vice chancellors, and we'll try to help in getting you to understand this better than we do. The CUNY Daily News Citizenship Now Call-In was conducted last week, beginning with a launch last Monday, April 23rd, with Senator Charles Schumer, Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, Assembly Speaker Sheldon Silver, publisher Mort Zuckerman, New York State Senator Adriana Espead, and New York City Council Member Idonis Rodriguez. This year, a total of 12,571 people were served through this latest call-in in the nation that assists New Yorkers obtain access to citizenship and naturalization. The 10-year total is an amazing 109,873 people served. Mayor Bloomberg, City Council Speaker Christine Quinn, public advocate Bill de Blasio, most of the borough presidents and other business leaders and government officials visited the call-in, which was held for the first time at CUNY's new community college. We owe a special debt of gratitude, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, to the over 400 volunteers from CUNY colleges, immigrant organizations, and law firms all over New York City. This idea was the brainchild of our own Senior Vice Chancellor Jay Hirschensohn, who has been indefatigable in convincing me this was the right thing to do, and kudos to Professor Alan Wernick, who has really been extraordinary in making this important public service available to all. I was pleased to participate in the Second Annual CUNY Philanthropy Forum that took place today at the CUNY Graduate Center. Today's forum builds on the success of the Invest in CUNY campaign, the university's inaugural fundraising effort that was launched in 2004. Since then, the colleges of CUNY have raised close to $2.2 billion in private funds and are committed to exceeding our ambitious goal of $3 billion by 2015. I'm deeply proud. I'm deeply proud and grateful for the success that our presidents, our volunteers, our faculties, and loyal alumni have achieved to date. There were over 200 attendees, including college presidents, advancement professionals, alumni officers, academic leaders, finance staff, and grants officers from all our 24 institutions, as well as many CUNY friends, including alumni, grantors, and volunteer leaders. Speaking of philanthropy, I'd like to congratulate President Lisa Stagnano-Koiko on the recent $10 million gift from Martin and Michelle Cohen to City Colleges Division of Science. Lisa, that's a... Martin called me a couple of days ago, and he said, "Matthew, not too bad from a kid from the Bronx." So, Lisa, congratulations in doing that. I am pleased to announce that last week, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency awarded Sustainable CUNY the prestigious 2012 Environmental Quality Award for its effort to support large-scale solar adoption as lead for the New York City Solar American City Partnership. Each year, the EPA honors those who have demonstrated an outstanding commitment to protecting and enhancing environmental quality and public health. The partnership comprising CUNY, the Mayor's Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability, and the New York City Economic Development Corporation won a grant from the U.S. Department of Energy through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act to design and build the New York City Solar Map as part of a comprehensive solar plant for New York City. Additional funding was provided by the City of New York and the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, with technical support provided by Con Edison. Special accommodations should be given to Deputy Chief Operating Officer Ron Spalter and our Director of Sustainability, Tricia Case, who led this important effort for CUNY. I'd also like to congratulate Vice Chair Barry, and Mrs. Karen Barry, who received the Forging Partnership Award at the Shared Interest 18th Annual Anniversary Awards for their work in support of microfinancing efforts in South Africa. Kudos also to Senior Vice Chancellor and Board Secretary Jay Hirschensohn, who received the Legacy Award by the Hispanic Federation at their gala on April 19th. And, boy, was that a party for those of you who didn't go. Make sure you go next year. Also, kudos to Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl, who was awarded with the Ostos Person of the Year Award at Ostos Community College Annual Gala, and kudos to Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez on his appointment to the Bill and Melinda Gates Millennium Scholars Advisory Board. I also wish to congratulate President Carroll Burrow Joseph, who was honored by the Caribbean American Chamber of Commerce and Industry at their annual Salute to Women: History Makers event, and to President Jeremy Travis, who was recently named by the National Research Council of the National Academies to serve as Chair of a Committee on the Causes and Consequences of High Rates of Incarceration in America. Kudos to you, Jeremy. That's quite a prestigious appointment. Also, to President Jennifer Rabb, who received the Miriam N. Neder Award as the keynote speaker at the 18th Annual Kate Stoneman Day at Albany Law School. The award is presented in honor of Kate Stoneman, the first woman admitted to practice law in New York State and the first female graduate of Albany Law School in 1898. And lastly, congratulations to President Regina Perucci on Kingsborough Community College selection again as one of the nation's 120 best community colleges by the Aspen Institute College Excellence Program. This distinction allows Kingsborough Community College to compete for a $1 million in prize monies, which will be announced, I believe, next year, March of 2013. And lastly, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on a more serious and difficult thing for me to have to deal with, I was truly appalled, disturbed, and, quite frankly, totally perplexed by the action taken by the College of Staten Island Senate last March, a month ago, where a no-confidence vote was placed for deliberation on the floor of the Faculty Senate at the College of Staten Island. Not only do I strenuously disagree with those who voted affirmatively, but I am amazed that a Senate body that prides itself on process would stoop to an action that violates the most basic premise of collegial discourse. One needs to take very seriously actions taken that can tarnish a president's reputation. And from where I sit, members of the board, I think Tomas Morales has been an exemplar of a president. He has been bold, courageous, he has helped to recruit a coterie of extraordinary faculty during the time of his tenure. He got a residence hall moving at the College of Staten Island, the first in its history, the High Performance Computing Center, which is going to be the place where very advanced computing is going to be done in this university, and the list goes on. I want the board to know that I support Tomas Morales without exception, and want you to know, Tomas, that I look forward to you being a good colleague with me and the rest of us here at the City University in the years to come.
Are there questions? Trustee Morales.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I strongly support President Tomas Morales. For the record, we have the same name, Morales, but we are not family. I strongly support him because of the extraordinary way he has reached out beyond the campus gates to involve the community as never before. Under his leadership, student enrollment are soaring. Students are winning major awards, and his announcement of plans for a resident hall are just three samples of many ways that the college is moving forward. Mr. Chairman, one more moment, I want to say something. We very often do things that are not properly recognized. The activity that we have in Albany, it was outstanding. I had never seen in my years of more than 40 years of participating in political process from White House to Albany, seeing so many important politicians gathered in one room talking about CUNY by Chancellor Jay Hirschensohn and Chancellor Matthew Walton, who had an outstanding ovation. I want to say for the record that I express my gratitude, my admiration for the work that they are doing, not only in the field of education, but also health, immigration, business, and so on and so forth. I always say that CUNY is the heart of New York City. Thank you.
I would like to say, I know I speak on behalf of the entire board, that when trustee Basile's committee recommended finalists for the College of Staten Island, that the chancellor and I were both extraordinarily impressed with the whole field that was recommended and felt that Tomas Morales stood out head and shoulders. And I believe his accomplishments since he became the president of the College of Staten Island have more, more than borne out our highest hopes for his leadership. So, the board stands strongly with our chancellor in their view, without qualification.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I was on the search committee when President Morales was selected, and I just remember that the challenge that we gave him to lead the College of Staten Island, and he has done an incredible job there. I'm astounded, as astounded as the chancellor, you know, about what occurred at the Senate. I just feel that we owe him just a round of thanks. We have given it to him. You, President Morales, you have done a wonderful job there, and you work incredible hours, but it's not just working the hours. You are extremely dedicated, and you have taken it to a whole other level. So, I just applaud and salute your efforts.
Everyone, please know that I and trustee DiMartino are in complete support of President Morales. From the outset of our efforts on the search committee to hire him five years ago, we met with great opposition from people at the College of Staten Island. And it's very important to know that he has not only maintained a commitment to the people of Staten Island, but it's sincere and it goes deep. He's very engaged. I find him on committees in the community that I am on, and the feedback that I get is phenomenal. He is sincere, he's honest, he tells it like it is, and he has made the students of CSI very important to the community. We are not the College of Last Resort on Staten Island. We are in the forefront, and we will be even better once we have the student residences. People will put in reservations, and I'm sure faculty will as well. And I think we should continue to support him wholeheartedly. He's done a phenomenal job, and Tomas, you're not finished yet. This is just the beginning.
Thank you very much. Travis?
Yes.
I'd like to make a few brief comments on this topic, and I'd like to put it a little bit more of a context than just what I perceive to have been an injustice to President Morales. I think it's deeply troubling when a robust debate about an academic subject, in this case, the Pathways Initiative, turns into an unpleasant disagreement involving motions of no confidence, litigation, protest, and the like. I'm not going to speak here today in defense of the Pathways Initiative. I supported it, continue to support it. My support is built on studying it and worrying about it and thinking about it, and I thank the faculty who have both supported it, and I thank the faculty who have opposed it, because we have learned from both, the importance of the subject and the importance of the focus that we are putting on it. Why am I concerned about this vote of no confidence in addition to the personal aspects about President Morales, and I identify and support the remarks made prior? First of all, I believe it violates a core concept of the university. The chancellor gave an incredible summary about the diversity efforts in this university. We are diverse, we reflect the city, which is the most diverse city in the world, and our population in the university reflects that diversity, including the student body, faculty, administrative, staff, and trustees. But diversity is just not about race, gender, or ethnicity. A truly great university has all of that, or it won't be great. A truly great university, however, has one other thing, and that is a respect for diversity of ideas and a respect for ideas that are diverse from our own. A university comprised of people who agree with each other on every issue would be an intellectual wasteland, at best, and an ideological gulag at worst. Our we, a university, has lost the ability to engage in robust public debate without personal attacks, whether they be ad hominem or professional. Much has been weighed about the opposition to pathways. I know about the petition, we're going to hear apparently or see about the petition. I need to be clear, there's a principle at play here, and that's that intelligent and sincere opposition to elements of any initiative are always welcome. I have welcomed them and have re- I have welcomed them, and I have received numerous messages that were very well thought out, and some that were simply off-base and not particularly well thought out, but the point is, the faculty engaged and continue to engage, and that's not bad. It's also violative, in addition to our concept of diversity, this very notion of a motion of no confidence is violative of the concept that is touted by many of shared governance. On the time that I've been on this board, I've repeatedly heard elected faculty representatives assert every single time that we disagree with them, that we are rejecting the notion of shared governance. Whether we disagree or agree does not affect shared governance. The dialogue and the effect of the dialogue is what shared governance is about. The ultimate rejection, Mr. Chairman, in my view, of shared governance is the invocation of a third party, in this case, the power of the state, in litigation to attempt to impose a solution when one failed to negotiate the solution that one preferred. President Morales, you have done a great job. Your bio says a lot about you, but it doesn't say how far you've come, the distance you have traveled, both academically and personally. So for the effective, innovative leadership of the College of Staten Island, you know this Board supports you. For life spent overcoming obstacles as a Hispanic in the academic community and truly a pioneering Hispanic, this Board supports you. For bearing with grace and dignity the indignity of having thirteen faculty members vote in favor of a motion for no confidence, this Board supports you. Finally, I want you to know that the endorsement you received by acclamation was indeed unanimous and accurately and completely reflects the opinion of this Board. We should agree and we should disagree, but we should do so with respect for the human dignity of the people with whom we are debating. I believe that was violated in this case, and I share the comments of Chairman Schmidt and Chancellor Goldstein and my fellow trustees in that regard. Thank you.
Are there other comments about the Chancellor's report? I would just like to note three things about it. If you can't be quiet and let us proceed with our business, I will ask the security staff to show you out. You're not on your way out.
I'm a slow walker, Chairman.
I would like to...
Thank you very much. Six thousand have spoken. Halfway is broken. 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 Six thousand have spoken. chief investment officer Janet Crone reported on the university's investment portfolio. Upon completion of the investment update, the committee proceeded to conduct the spending deliberations in accordance with state statute known as NIPFA for fiscal year 2013. A motion ensued, and the Subcommittee approved authorizing funds for annual expenditure from the portfolio at a rate at or below 4.5 percent of the portfolio's average market value. This item, which was item 3D in today's calendar, was approved as submission to the board. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Loda. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this April 2nd, 2012 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar number 4A, application to register the MS in Geographic Information Science at Lehman College. This program will enable students to develop research skills in spatial analysis and will be attracted to professionals working in the fields of public health, environmental science, and resource management. The program will also be attractive to a traditional student with an undergraduate degree from a variety of science, technology, engineering, or mathematics disciplines. One track fulfills the requirements within the framework of the National Initiative for Professional Science Masters Degrees, focusing specifically on preparing students for advanced practice and management positions, and the other track prepares students for study beyond the masters such as CUNY's PhD Program in Earth and Environmental Sciences. Calendar number 4B, application to register the MS in Earth Systems and Environmental Engineering at City College. This program integrates traditional science and engineering disciplines with overall goal of training students to solve the contemporary environmental problems. Similar to the previous proposal, this program also fulfills the requirement of a professional science master's degree. It also includes an internship and training in the workplace skills such as regulatory affairs and project management. The three tracks, Water Resource Engineering Management, Climate and Remote Sensing, and Geoinformatics and Geoinformation Systems, were selected as the workforce areas most likely to sustain high demand for qualified employees. Calendar number 4C, application to register the MA in Branding and Integrated Communications at City College. This graduate program integrates advertising, management, creative development, and public relations to promote and integrate the interdisciplinary approach to creating brand identity. The program prepares graduates for planning and executing effective campaigns across a wide range of media, equipping them for careers in a variety of jobs in not-for-profit and for-profit marketing communications. Calendar number 4D, application to register both the MS and the BS in Biotechnology at City College. These two programs build on existing recognized strengths in natural sciences at City College. The programs are designed to prepare students for career entry or advancement in biotechnology in settings such as pharmaceutical industry and medical and academic research laboratories. Biotechnology remains a fast-growing field, excuse me, in the greater New York area as well as nationwide. Offering affordable degrees in this field fulfills a need for qualified workforce and providing students with a competitive edge. Calendar number 4E, application to register the BS in Bio-Medical Informatics at New York City College, New York City Technical College. This innovative program, the first of its kind at CUNY, will equip students with the technical skills and knowledge needed to process biological and biomedical data used in pharmacology, healthcare, and biomedical research. Students will have a range of careers options from entry-level employment to continuing on to graduate or professional school. The curriculum is consistent with the current standards in the field and will prepare students for graduate studies. Calendar number 4F, resolution to confer honorary degrees at Brooklyn College, the CUNY School of Law, Lehman College, the Graduate School and University Center, John J. College, Bernard Baruch College, and the McCully Honors College. For this meeting of the Board of Trustees, a new procedure has been instituted for the approval of college requests to confer honorary degrees. For approval of each honorary degree candidate, there are four steps. Number one, review of the candidate and submission of the nomination by the college to the chancellor. Number two, review of the candidate by the chancellor's office and submission of the nomination to the Board Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. Number three, review of the candidate's information and recommendation of the candidate by CAPRA. Number four, review of the candidate's information and final approval by the full Board of Trustees. As the culmination of these four steps, the following candidates for honorary degrees are before you today. Brooklyn College wishes to confer the honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Sylvia Mendez, the American Civil Rights activist; the honorary Doctor of Science upon Anthony Fauci, Director of National Institute of Allergy Infectious Diseases; and the honorary Doctor of Fine Arts upon Cecil Taylor, the pianist and poet. The CUNY Law School wishes to confer the honorary Doctor of Laws upon Ronald Ellis, a U.S. magistrate judge; Dick Engle Sekue, the Deputy Chief Justice of South Africa; and Rahika Komarasaemi, the United Nations Undersecretary General. Lehman College wishes to confer the honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Shirley Rodriguez Rumeneski, Chairperson Bronx Lebanon Hospital Board of Trustees and President of 100 Hispanic Women. Karen Musalo, President of Law, University of California, Hastings College of Law, and Albert Carey Chief Executive Officer of PepsiCo. The Graduate School and University Center wishes to confer the honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Marian Goodman, the International Art Galleries, and upon Philip Levine, the U.S. poet laureate. John J. College wishes to confer the honorary degree upon Judith Jamison, Artist Director Emerita, Alvin Ailey, American Dance Theater. The honorary Doctor of Laws upon Michael Melster, Distinguished University Professor at Northeastern University of Law, School of Law, and on Michael Perlin, Professor of Law, New York Law School. Baruch College wishes to confer the honorary Doctors of Letters upon David Brooks, columnist of the New York Times, and the honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Louis Capelli, Baruch Class of 58 and Chairman of Sterling National Bank. The McCully Honors College wishes to confer the honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Mel Tisch, the Chancellor of New York State Board of Regents. Mr. Chairman, item 4A through 4F were approved by the committee and recommend their approval by the board.
I am happy to second that resolution. Are there questions for the board on any of the items? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Anything further to report? Trustee Chan?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pleased to present for the board's consideration the matters that the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration reviewed at its meeting on April 2nd, 2012. Item 5A names two rooms in the library at Queensborough Community College as the Senator Frank Paverman Archives, Paverman, I'm sorry, Padovan, and the Senator Frank Padovan Archives Annex. From 1972 to 2010, Senator Padovan represented the borough of Queens, 11th District. His Senate Papers document his service as a principal architect of legislation on a variety of issues including mental health advocacy, economic reform, crime, terrorism, and education. The senator has donated his Senate Papers to Queensborough Community College, and the college will preserve them and provide access to scholars and community members. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends approval of this naming. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Yes.
I just think that Senator Padovan deserves extra mention. I'm sure many on the chancellor, he will agree, certainly Jay. You know, sometimes today, not always, but many times, the standards for public officials have become quite low. And Senator Frank Padovan is an exceptional individual, totally dedicated to his work over the years, but he's also extremely talented, an archaeologist, someone that put his heart and soul into the legislature. He was very dedicated to City University. In the years that we made the trip up to Albany, we visit him constantly. He fielded and took programs and disbursements, everything that was necessary for the budget of City University, he fielded. He's an exceptional, exceptional individual, a great American patriot, military man, and he is really an exemplar, not just in terms of recognizing him, but for the students of this university to look in, who is Frank Padovan? A very special man.
Good. Thank you very much for your commentary. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. Next item.
Thank you. Item 5B names the conference room in the Student Government Office at John J. College of Criminal Justice as the Doctors Ruby and James Malone Student Government Conference Room. The college wishes to honor these longstanding members of the John J. community for their decades of service to the college and its students, and in recognition of their establishment of a $100,000 endowed scholarship for John J. students. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration is pleased to recommend approval of this naming. Mr. Chair, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. That carries. Next item.
Thank you. Item 5C pertains to a proposed change to the governance plan of the City College of New York to increase the flexibility of the college ombudsman election process. The amendment requires the faculty senate to make a good-faith effort to find two candidates, but allows for one candidate if those efforts do not yield two candidates. Mr. Chair, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. That carries.
Thank you. And now I'd like to add my thoughts to the chancellor's remark about the Diversity Action Plan, which Vice Chancellor Waters and Dean Jennifer Rubain shared with the committee in great detail at our meeting on April 2nd. I had the opportunity to work very closely with Vice Chancellor Waters and Dean Rubain on this initiative, and wish to recognize their diligent efforts along with those of the members of the Ad Hoc Committee on Strengthening Faculty Diversity, on which I was privileged to serve. The action plan includes developing the Diversity Action Plan involves months of research, analysis, and in-depth discussions with interested parties throughout our university community. The plan's strategies are designed to promote a supportive work environment and an inclusive university community which are essential to organizational excellence. The plan considers diversity and inclusion systematically as well on the campus level, and addresses the opportunities available to increase faculty diversity and promote inclusion. The plan acknowledges the impact that certain governance rules may have on achieving diversity goals, and allows the campus to develop solutions within their own framework. And I just like to note, a particular interest of mine was just how the role of the committee chairs in this election process, and how that may or may not thwart diversity. And I appreciate the chancellor and the vice chancellor for looking into that process. It also ensures that diversity continues to be a priority because of its elevated standing within the PMPs. The City University of New York has a history of developing innovative diversity enterprises such as the Blackmail Initiative. Equally significant are the successes of existing programs aimed at diversifying the professional staff as well as the staff professors, including the Latino Faculty Recruitment Initiative, the Decade of the Science with its Stella Women in Science component, the Diversity Projects Development Fund, and the Faculty Fellowship Publications Program. The Diversity Action Plan builds on those successes by creating new postdoctoral fellow and scholar-in-residence programs which will allow us to leverage the benefits of a university-wide system. I believe that the CUNY Diversity Action Plan provides the impetus for renewed thinking, energy, and action devoted to the recruiting and hiring of talented and diverse faculty in all disciplines. I urge each of you to read and review its recommendations, and to join me in committing ourselves to sustaining and enhancing CUNY's role as one of the most diverse institutions of higher education in the nation. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. I'd like to call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has one item for the board's approval. The committee met on April 2nd, 2012, and approved the following calendar item. Calendar item 6A, New Community College: Establishment of the College Association and Initial Student Activity Fee. The New Community College desires to organize a college association to administer student activity fee funds, consistent with other colleges at CUNY. The college seeks approval of the initial certificate of incorporation and bylaws of the new corporation. The college also desires to set an initial student activity fee to support a full range of extracurricular activities pursuant to Section 16.2 of the bylaws. Without student governance in place, the fee is being brought forward to the board at the recommendation of the president of the college and with the support of the vice chancellor for student affairs. This process follows the 1983 precedent when the new law school interim fee was established. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6A.
Thank you very much. Do you need a resolution to approve the Community College Association?
No.
No. We'll turn next, thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following two resolutions came in too late for prior review at the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management meetings that was scheduled for April 2nd. Therefore, they are being bought before the Board of Trustees today for consideration. The first one is Queens College is a lease renewal for Queens College to authorize a 15-year lease renewal for the space at 154-1165th Avenue in Flushing, New York. The current lease expired on February 29th. This building is known as Cassina Hall and has been occupied by Queens College since the mid-'60s as space for classrooms and offices for staff and faculty. Since the expiration of the lease on February 29th, the university is a month-to-month tenant at the site at the current base rate of $946,440, something like that. Okay. A lease renewal for the next 15 years for the approximately 29,000 rentable square feet of space has been agreed upon with the following proposed terms. First five-year period not to exceed $858,400 per year. The second five-year lease not to exceed $16,400 per year. And the third five-year period not to exceed $974,400 per year. CUNY-wide multi-lease, the second resolution, CUNY-wide multi-lease agreements to authorize CUNY to enter into building lease agreements with various landlords to provide residential student housing options. The lease agreements will provide student housing options primarily for students attending Baruch, Hunter, and John J. Colleges. A number of suitable existing housing facilities or apartments have been identified that may be leased in whole or in part. This resolution will provide CUNY with the flexibility to negotiate and act quickly on any of those opportunities that appear feasible. The cost of such leases will be covered by student rent payments or available college funds. No tax levy support will be required. The colleges will enter into license agreements with the students and collect rent for the full semester. The college will then make payments to the landlord on a monthly basis. Any such lease will be subject to review and approval by the vice chancellor for facilities planning, construction, and management and the general counsel. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you. I'd like to second those items. Are there questions for the committee on either of these leases? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I would like to note for the trustees, in connection with the Committee on Facilities, the remarkable fact, at least remarkable to me, that CUNY now accounts for 20 percent of all the construction in the City of New York. 20 percent. I'd like to move the adoption of the SOC scholars that are listed in your meeting books. This is an annual recognition of some of our most outstanding students. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. That concludes the business of this public meeting. We'll now adjourn and go into executive session.